Again, welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Tuesday, December 10, 2024. May I ask you please to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I'll try to keep things moving. I know we have a lot on the agenda this evening. For the folks at home, if you'd be kind enough to pan to the big screen so the folks at home can see what we'll be discussing tonight. I'm trying to blow it up a little bit. We have five public hearings related to a moratorium waiver. We'll also have a public hearing after that on the Cookingham West proposed solar project. Also, the fire service agreements with both Village Red Hook Fire Company and Tivoli Fire Company as well. We have a public hearing related to local law D at 8:00 and at 8:20, local law E. D relates to amending zoning laws. E relates to smoking in our public spaces and cannabis and vaping and all of that. And here are our agenda items, many of which were discussed and are part of public hearings. We also have our engineer, Brandy Nelson, here with us tonight. We're going to walk us through a little bit about some discussion as it relates to St. Margaret's parking. And Brandy, since you are here, I think maybe we'll go ahead and maybe reorder things so that you don't have to stay till very late. I know you have a long commute. All right, we have an extension of the shared service agreement with Dutchess County as it relates to purchasing. And then we have a resolution to approve amending the intermunicipal agreement with the village of Red Hook regarding the sewer district, proposed sewer district here in the traditional neighborhood. And what we're looking to do there is to codify our commitment to using ARPA funding towards those capital construction costs. And so that's what we have for tonight's agenda. I'll quickly just give you the supervisor's report. As you know by now, if you've watched some of these meetings, every first meeting of the month, we do a snapshot at the end of the previous month of the financial condition of the municipality. We started, this is for the month of November. We started with an opening balance of $7,444,000, proceeds of $1,007,000, dispersments of $1,001,000 for an ending balance of just over $8 million. If you joined us at our last meeting, I did point out that the comptroller's office for 2023, which is the most recent year, sent our financial risk score, which was a perfect score, meaning we have zero risk of having any fiscal stress. According to the metrics that they use, it's the best possible score. We have, if you turn your head sideways, we have both an abstract and a town clerk's report. Did you all have any questions about the supervisor's report? We're going to get budget adjustments at our second meeting as we typically do for our December meeting. Anybody want to make a motion to accept the supervisor's report?
Salute.
Thank you, William. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Deanna, if you'd kindly give us the snapshot on the town clerk's report.
The town clerk's report for the period of November 1st to November 30th, 2024. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $6,856.14. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for spay neuter program, $25. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage license, $45. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $871.36. Total state, county, and local revenues, $7,797.50. And I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 32700 to 32812, totaling $345,981.32, processed in the month of November 2024, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Thank you. And it certainly looks like an abstract on it sideways. Is there a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor?
Aye.
Just a couple of quick announcements. The VFW is having Christmas in the Village this Saturday, 12 to 2:00. And also later that day, there is, and I do not know why, this is also sideways, a Christmas parade of lights. It will be making its way down Route 9 and through the village, up Park Avenue to Linden, and then also into College Park. So look forward to that. I hope there's good weather for those two events. Okay. Since we are running a couple of minutes late, let's get straight to our first public hearing. Were there any public comments unrelated to any of the public hearings before we go ahead and move to the first public hearing? Anybody want to have any comments unrelated to public hearing? Okay, hearing none. May we entertain opening the public hearing over 7:35? Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the notice, please?
Notice of public hearing. Town of Red Hook, please take notice that the public hearing will be held by the town board of Town of Red Hook on December 10, 2024, at the respective times set forth below or soon thereafter as the matter comes before the board at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on the application received on the date set forth below from the applicant set forth below for hardship waiver of the provisions of Local Law Number 1 of 2024 entitled "The Local Law Placing Moratorium on Applications in the TND/CC Subdistrict, on Applications for Subdivision in the AB District, and on Applications Affecting Wetlands Adopted March 27, 2024." The requests for waiver concern the following. Owner and application date, Doug Struinsky, November 4, 2024. Property tax parcel, 21 Seater Drive, Rhinebeck, New York, 18.856 acres. Please take further notice copies of said proposed waiver. Applications are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the town board at 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated November 12, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Deanna. This time, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would anybody like to speak on this matter? Going once, twice. Okay. We have correspondence, both from our code enforcement folks at Building and Zoning Department and from our engineer, Brandy York, here as it relates to the project. And so let the record show that we received both of those things as part of our consideration. Okay, since we don't have any public hearing comments at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second on that? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, 7:44. So why don't we quickly see if we can dispose of this agenda item number one, the application? Let's review the correspondence that we did receive. Is it in our packet? Yes, it is. Okay. We have both the application, correspondence from our Building and Zoning, and the memo from our engineers from Prime Bond recommending granting the waiver. There are no objections to the town granting the waiver to the application to proceed. Any questions, folks, on this? This is a property that was delineated a couple of years ago. All right, well, let's move things right along then, shall we? Deanna, what resolution is this, please?
119.
119, counting. Who would like to move Resolution 119, which is authorizing a waiver regarding Mr. Struinsky's project on the provisions of what was Local Law Number 1 of 2024?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second? The battle for the seconds. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Let's jump in, shall we? 7:45, we're catching up. Second public hearing, shall we?
Notice.
Okay, so we have notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Town of Red Hook, please take notice that the public hearing will be held by the town board of the Town of Red Hook on December 10, 2024, at 7:45 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons regarding the town's proposal to undergo a Monroe balancing analysis to potentially exempt itself from zoning review in regard to the proposed Cookingham Solar Project for an approximately 749.1 kW kilowatts, ground-mounted solar installation at Willowbrook Lane. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the town board. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated November 12, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. Okay, and as it relates to this project, we have had correspondence from NYSERD consenting for the town to be lead agency from the planning board as well. We have our EAF Part 1 analysis. We've had correspondence as it relates to this public hearing that we received, two pieces of correspondence, one earlier today and one just a little while ago. And so let that, the record show that we received that from the girl links. And so at this time, I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you.
You're moving it. Second.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Would somebody like to speak on this matter? Just a reminder, many years ago, we asked that you keep your comments to three minutes, if you would, please, on these matters, just so we can continue work. We encourage you to do as much as possible than writing because a lot of times that can be more thoughtful and lengthy. Would you like to make any additional remarks? Anyone, as it relates to the project? Would you? Would you come forward, please, just state your name? You don't need to state anything but your address.
You go first.
I think we don't have to this time.
Do you want me to go first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Barry, if you'd be kind enough, just come and say your name. That's all you need to do for the record.
Barry Gerland.
Thank you.
Shall I stay here?
Please, yes, because the microphone is catching it so that it can be recorded and people can hear your comment.
Right, well. I submitted a rather lengthy document which detailed the situation with regard to the solar array that is planned. It's long, it's historical, stretches back at least 30 years, and then to the date at which a house was built, which was 1750. The, this page after page in my presentation, my wife participated in preparing that, and you don't want to hear me go over it again. My daughter Hazel, who lived in her house for a long time because she went to Park College and got married and now frequently visits us in the house. I think the results, the comments amount to this, that we think the solar array is a mistake. Secondly, that we regard as contravening the laws which enabled the provision of funds to buy the cooking and land. Thirdly, that any other funds you used and mingled with that do not overpower the claims of that particular fund and its genesis and its aims, and clearly stated. Moreover, our house has been on the historic register, is on the historic register, for both New York State and the country, the national register. And we've had various visits from groups, and we have a chronicle of what the house, how it started, its history, its structure, and why it contributes to the history of this area as well. We make it clear that putting up a solar array in the place you plan or indicate will be a terrible mistake, that in future years it will be recognized as a mistake if it gets through, which I hope it does not. So I want to register, first of all, that me, my family, my daughter, my son-in-law, and all the rest I could list, and friends as well that are here, are adamantly opposed to the solar array. Moreover, that isn't enough. We're opposed to you being the lead agency in the solar array simply because you're leading yourself and therefore will not be fair, open, impartial, and a situation where I can argue the points for or against. We have an historic house. Mr. McCune has done a wonderful job at developing this area. And moreover, he's put in fences and walks and trails and things which have transformed the area. We know because we see the people coming in to enjoy those trails. It's a remarkable flood of people from what we've known over the 30 years that we've been here. We enjoy that, and they enjoy it as well. However, they come to see the scenic views. And scenic views they can expect because that is the mandate of the money that gave you the opportunity to buy this property. And there are beautiful views. They're incredible. And the views are not matters which can be parceled out into smaller lands. So if you look southwest at 9:00 AM, you'll see a wonderful view. You expect a view to be part of the land, of the scenery, of the experience of walking down those beautiful lanes that you, Robert, have made. That is an act of genius, we know it's transformative. I could go on forever, why it is wrong to put the micro-solar array there, but it's unnecessary. I think you intuitively know, you've had the experience. I submitted a very long document, photographs and all. My daughter, who makes documentaries and lives here, has lived in the house for so long. In fact, was the reason why we bought the house in the first place. My daughter has written a much more pithy article with beautiful illustrations, but she makes documentaries, so that's easy for her. I don't. I'm a psychiatrist, if I'm anything. And I have no particular knack. But I want to say with force now that we object to the idea of macroarrays, macroarrays there. Moreover, we don't think you are the proper agency to lead the development of anything like that. I don't know how to include it in some sort of rubric. But you don't belong there because you're already prejudiced. You declared what it is. Moreover, you're more than prejudiced, you're invested in it. So I am here to state something which can be read in the documents that we've submitted. I won't tediously go through that. But it's wrong, that much I can say perfunctorily, and I can say it shortly. And I hope you read the documents. You don't read mine, which is lengthy. Read my daughter's, which gives you the solid facts and the theory and approach succinctly. So think, you should not be the lead agency at all because it should be open to discussion, to criticism, contraviews and so on. Do you read the two documents if you can?
I did, I did, Barry. And I hope the board members did, yes.
Okay.
I thank you. It does help to get them a little sooner, but we did have the chance to see, to read them right beforehand. Would anyone else like to speak? Please, would you just be kind enough to state your name? That's all. Yes?
Joanna Dupie. I'm family, but I'm also local. I come by and I walk that walk. And I do agree with Barry. I think it's a complicated issue. But just from the point of view of the person, people who are walking the walk. And it got written up in the chronogram. It's a lovely place to go. It's, I just saw the newest chronogram, and it's in there. There has to be, I mean, I don't know enough to say who should be running, you know, the lead agent. But I do think that it's an odd place to decide to put up an array. The array that you have behind, behind here, it's pretty private, nobody's really bothered by it. This is going to be just in the middle of a walk. There's, it's a huge amount of property you have there. Maybe you could find somewhere else to put it. But I, I don't know how to speak anymore than that. It just seems, if it's something that isn't comfortable to at least this family who lives right there, and perhaps people who are walking, perhaps it could be thought of as something that you could imagine putting it in another place.
Thank you, Joanna. Appreciate that. Appreciate your comments. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Ronnie, no? All right. So we did acknowledge the correspondence. We have acknowledged also our consultants, engineer review, environmental part one. Chris, are you there? Did you want to walk us through? No, I think I'm ready to close the public hearing. Likewise, folks? Okay. I'll make that motion, close the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's go through. Chris, do you want to walk us through? And I'll just repeat loudly, if you'd be kind enough to...
Can you make your microphone point at the...
I'll try, I'll try. They will be able to hear Brandy. Brandy, Chris is asking if you walk us through two and three. Chris is going to walk us through procedure, okay?
Right, but I'll just start by saying that what we want to get is you will have to have a part one in front of you.
Yeah.
And just, you've been providing with part two and part three, so you'll walk through part two and then walk through the part three analysis.
Right.
And then the three resolutions. The first one is a resolution to approve a main deck.
Yeah.
And the second one is to approve a money,
Right.
which is to determine that zoning provisions would not be applicable for this particular project because some other projects they have to follow the process that you would do. And that resolution doesn't involve some findings that would lead from the resolution to grant...
It's a nice game.
...project cost, right?
Yeah. Okay. So on part one, so what we're doing is environmental review just for the folks in the audience. When we talk about lead agency, it's strictly for the purpose of doing the environmental review. And the town board has determined that it believes it's the most appropriate agency to do that review on this project. And so we do have a part one that's been prepared by our engineer. And were there any questions about that? Again, it's for a 749.1 kilowatt or .749 megawatt can be solar array. I think in part one, for the analysis purposes, four acres were used. I mean, we understand that for the actual PV, it's likely that it'll be smaller than four. But for the benefit of the environmental analysis, we're using four acres. I did note, Mr. Gerland, you put seven acres in one of your presentations. That's when the system was contemplated to be larger than it is. It's now contemplated just to be about a third of what was originally thought of for that property. And it's all going to be on the former mine portion of the lands that has not been farmed in generations. So just for the folks, for edification. Okay. So part one, were there any questions on part one, folks?
I would just to add on a little bit more to what you just said.
Yeah.
The fact that it was gravel mined has created a dip. So the array would actually be set down below the level of the ground surrounding it. So that is something that we looked at as a modification to reduce the visual impact of the project, the proposed project.
I got a question from someone along the line that I actually couldn't remember where we had landed. I think we've discussed this in passing. But in addition to the safety fence that's required around the array, have we talked about screening, you know, vegetative screening in any kind? Do you think that that would help with any visual impact from the trails?
Well, because it sits down below, it makes it a little bit of an additional challenge.
Yeah.
You know, it's a little easier when you have a flat ground where you're doing the visibility. So on the one hand, it protects the view of the mountains and whatever when you're on that portion of the trails, and it keeps it nice and low, kind of like what we have in Red Park West when you drive on Linden. You can hardly see that there's anything over there because it sits down. On the other hand, when you are on the property, then you can sit, see, to your point, you can see it when it's looking down. But, you know, the concept is put it on the lowest part. Make sure, you know, and the exact layout will, of course, be determined by the panels.
What is the height of it?
Okay, so our code calls for nothing higher than 12 feet. Nothing higher than 12 feet is what our code calls for. And there's quite a bit of a dip in that area, so...
You could say that, but you probably know how much it's a dip.
I don't know exactly, and it's not an exact number. But yes, we do have slopes, and we have all of that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other questions on the part ones?
You know, I was going to point to order.
Barry, I'm sorry, we did close the public hearing, but one quick question.
Oh, I see.
Sure, go ahead, yeah. That's why we asked for it. Is it a quick question? If it is, did you have...
Point of order question.
Yeah, point of order. Did you have a question? Emphasis on...
You made some statements about visual angles, visual fields, sensitivity, stimuli, and things like that. For the record, you're wrong.
How's that? If I am, it won't be the first. But I think we've analyzed that because it's in a bowl, it will, you'll be able to see over it. But will you be able to see it? Yes, absolutely, from different parts of the property.
Don't continue the argument unless you want to have a robust. And we're not in that sort of exchange.
No, no, I'm agreeing with you.
Well, not really.
Okay. Next. Part one, any other questions as it relates to part one? Okay, let's move to part two. Brandy, do you want to discuss with us some of the...
Did you want to go through each of the items on the...
Did you want to go through each of the items on the?
I think so, just quickly, if you wouldn't mind. Yeah, just because we have folks interested in the property, yeah.
Good evening, I'm Brandy Nelson, I'm an engineer with tie and bond. And as part of the Cooking Ham Solar project, we prepared a part one. In preparing a part one EAF, part of what we do is describe the scope of the project and the characteristics of the land where the project is sited, as well as the characteristics of the surrounding land. That was what was circulated for lead agency purposes at, I think, the first November meeting. Following up on the secret process, the next step is to prepare a part two, which is an assessment of the magnitude of impacts associated with the proposed activity, given a set of guidelines that the state provides, that provide certain thresholds for conditions. And so there are about 22 different categories here that the state establishes as part of the part two. The first question is just a general question about whether or not there's impacts to that category. If we answer it no, we will go to the next category. If we answer it yes, what we've prepared is a suggested part two, so we go down through each of the sub-questions. And then there's also an option for other. So if this board, you know, has an additional item you wanted us to add into the other category, we could certainly go back and amend the part two with that additional information. So that's our framework. So we'll start with number one, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. We answered that yes. And going down through the subcategories, the options when you're answering the sub-questions are either a no or small impact, or a moderate to large impact. So for number one, A, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth of water table is less than three feet. We mark that as no or small. Number B, or letter B, the proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. We wrote no or, we selected no or small.
Brandy, I'm thinking if we do each and every one of the sub-things, we'll be here a very long time.
We could be here forever, yeah.
Maybe we just highlight something that's moderate to large impact?
Sure, so we can go through each of the categories and maybe you guys.
Chris, I'm sorry. But we'll. Okay, all right. Chris wants us to go through a few of them verbally, yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll try and speak more quickly then, so.
No, that's fine.
Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of the existing ground surface. We mark that as no. D, the proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. We mark that as no. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. We mark that as no. The proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides. We mark that as no. The proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area. We mark that as no. Any changes?
Okay.
Category two, impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, typically identified as cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, or caves. We mark that as no. Going to category three, impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetland or other surface water bodies, such as streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. We mark that as yes. The proposed action, so of those subcategories, A, the proposed action may create a new body of water. We mark that as no. The proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more, or a 10-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water. We said no. The proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body. We said no. The proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland, or the better banks of any water body. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may create turbidity in water body either from upland erosion, runoff, or by disturbing bottom sediments. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes or withdrawals of water from a surface water body. We mark that as no. The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to a surface. We mark that as no. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within the downstream area of the site of the proposed action. We mark that as no. The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in and around any body of water. We mark that as no. And the proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing waste or treatment facilities. We mark that as no.
Any, any proposed changes there? No? Okay.
Number four, impact on groundwater. We marked that as no. Number five, impact on flooding. We marked as yes. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. The proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may result in development within a 100-year floodplain. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may result in development within a 500-year floodplain. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. We mark that as no. If there is a dam located on the site, the proposed action is a dam in need of repair or upgrade. We mark that as no. Category six is impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. We mark that as no. Will be no air emission source. Impacts on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. We mark that as no. Number eight, impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. We mark that as no.
We're noting that the soils that were present in that particular part of the property were excavated mine and sold off nearly 90 years ago.
Yeah, and for reference, those are primarily what the sub-questions are about. They pertain to impacts agricultural soils or farmland. Category nine, impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and scenic or aesthetic resources. We mark that as yes. So subcategory A, proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. We mark that as no or small. But we do assume there's a small impact. The proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic view. We mark that as no. The proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, either seasonally or year-round. We mark those as no or small. The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is, one, routinely traveled by residents, including travel to and from work. We mark that as no or small. And two, recreation or tourism-based activities. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may cause a diminishment of public enjoyment and appreciation of a designated aesthetic resource. We mark that as no or small. What? There are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project, within a half mile, half mile to three miles, three miles to five miles, or five miles. We mark no or small. Moving on to impact to historic and archaeological.
I just have a question about the clarifying.
Sure.
So for some of those, it seems as though it's clearly not no, it's maybe in the small category.
Right.
What is the threshold understood to be between small and moderate?
Sometime in the subcategories is actually a quantitative threshold, and sometimes there's not. So to a certain extent, it's a judgment call. However, with the part three, anything that we marked as a yes, we've provided more explanation as to what the potential impacts may be, what the magnitude is, and whether or not there are any mitigations that are proposed. Category 10, impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. Yes. Going through the subcategories, A, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing. We mark that as no or small, assuming there would be a small impact. B, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation's Archaeological Site Inventory. We mark that as no or small, and we have followed up with SHPO on that particular item. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not yet included on the New York SHPO inventory. We mark that as no or small. And I believe in your record, you do have the letter from SHPO. Number 11, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. We mark that as no. And the key there is that it's in an adopted open space plan. Number 12, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. These are special state-designated areas in the town of Red Hood, who don't believe has any, so we mark that as no. Impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. We mark that as no. Number 14, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. This project is generating energy, so we mark that as no. Number 15, impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odor, or outdoor light. We mark that as yes. Going through the subcategories, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. We mark that as no or small. The proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home. We mark that as no. The proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day. We mark that as no. The proposed action may result in light shining into adjoining properties. We mark that as no. The proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. We mark that as no. Number 16 is impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. We mark that as no. Number 17, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. We mark that as no. Number 18, consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. We mark that as no. That's the end of the category.
Any questions before we go on to part three? No?
Can we look at part three?
Please, maybe.
So as I said, particularly with regard to any questions where we answered yes, the draft part three provides supplemental information related to the decision-making and any background information associated with that. How would you like to go through this? What does, what does Chris recommend? Do you want me to read it? Do you have it to share on screen potentially?
I think we do. A quick summary of issues you've addressed, just.
Oh, sure, okay, okay. So in terms of the categories, as well as the summary that's provided in the part three, it is, it is gleaned from a review of the town zoning bylaw, some of the planning that went into creating the lot where the mining occurred and excluding it from agricultural activity because it does not have that value anymore. A review of the characteristics of the land, not having any viable topsoil on it anymore, and having a very concave nature to it that creates a low-lying area. And also the preservation of some of the existing structures that are on the Cooking Ham parcel, which provide some screening. I recognize they do not screen the whole of the array, but particularly along the Little Brook Road, they do provide some screening. And so in addition, we are drawing some experience from the discussion and the secret process that the town undertook when you approved the community solar project. And so that has informed and set essentially a baseline standard for the town's review purposes. So it's a combination of both precedent in the community as well as the site-specific characteristics of the property. So in terms of impact on land, we discussed here that the, the site was selected based on the impacts to land that have occurred due to the historic gravel mining activities, which resulted in significant soil disturbance, which then disqualifies that site from being suitable for further agricultural purposes. The proposed project is proposed to be roughly, or no more than 25%, so four acres out of the 11-acre parcel. And ground disturbance for the solar array installation is, is limited to the trenching for installing the electrical circuitry. And because the site is already cleared, there's no tree clearing that's necessary for the project. And the contractor will be responsible for installing erosion sediment control measures consistent with the state's requirements to mitigate stormwater runoff and any siltation activities. For impacts to surface water, we did indicate a yes on impacts to surface water, and that's primarily due to the potential for erosion and sediment control to have impacts. However, we do identify that the mitigating factor there is, is the erosion sediment control plan. In addition, we identified, and because the state's wetland regulations are in flux right now, we're using a larger check zone, a 300-foot check zone. There is a DEC-regulated wetland to the west of the project site. We did review the subject site specifically and did not find any wetlands specifically on the subject site, nor is any proposed activity proposed to occur within the 100-foot regulated adjacent area. And also, we anticipate that the array will be installed outside of the 300-foot review area that the town is currently maintaining through a development moratorium.
Brandy, do you anticipate that any impact to surface water would be temporary during the construction and then pretty much eliminated once the site is re-vegetated underneath?
That's correct, and that's typically the way the state, the state will maintain erosion sediment control, general, construction general permit in place until the vegetation is established. Impacts on groundwater, we did mark that as a no, but because we had had some comments during the last solar project, we provided some text on impacts on groundwater, indicating how the panels are sloped, and that site management will be maintained so that there are no hazardous substances during construction activities, and no pesticide or herbicide use would be allowed on that array, given its proximity to the aquifer and the town's wells. Impacts on flooding, we did mark that as yes, because there is a small portion of the subject site that is within both the 100-year and the 500-year floodplain. That's of the whole parcel itself. The mitigation for that potential impact is avoiding that area. There's plenty of additional low-lying land outside of the flood area, so that can be avoided, even though site characteristics show that there's. avoided, even though site characteristics show that there's flooding potential. Impact on agricultural resources. Although there are not any specific agricultural use on the subject property, we do note that the subject site is within the Agricultural District number 20, and it is surrounded by farmland. The subject parcel itself, though, does not have agricultural value. Impacts on plants and animals. Just in terms of context, we had marked that as no. However, we did do a review through the New York State's Environmental Resource Map or a Natural Heritage Program to identify whether or not any plants or animal species that are listed are present within the project area. And there are not. And in addition, commonly, we have to deal with bat species because of tree clearing, but there's no tree clearing proposed in this case either. An additional mitigation that would be deployed as part of mitigating any potential impacts to animals is typically solar ray. They do have fences around them. The fences have wildlife gaps in the bottoms to allow wildlife to not get entrapped within their array. So that's pretty standard and would be a requirement of the construction. Impacts on aesthetic resources. So in summary, we say that the solar array will take up approximately four acres of the subject site, and that the site has been operated as historic gravel mine between the 50s and the 1980s. There are surrounding parcels that are in farmland preservation conservation easements. There's the town wellhead protection area. And there is public visibility of the site from both the trails and for limited views along Route 9 and along Willowbrook Lane. We note that the impact to aesthetic resources is mitigated somewhat by the low-lying portion of subject site being topographically screened from Route 9, Mill Road, and Park Avenue in the Village. The array will be visible from Willowbrook Lane and will be partially visible to users of the Cooking Ham Trails. The array will be visible from the Hendrick Martin House, which we know is on the National Register. However, that is somewhat screened both by agricultural buildings on the Cooking Ham Farm property, as well as woody trees and vegetation that are located between the proposed solar PV site and the historic property. Any questions there? Impacts on historical and archaeological resources. We do say the project will not have an adverse impact on historical and archaeological resources. We do note that the site is adjacent to the Hendrick Martin Stone House, and we provide some details on its listing. We did indicate that we've made an inquiry to SHPO with regard to the proposed action, and that the site is not within any known archeological-sensitive area due to the historic mining activity, and the soil profile's been disturbed. The state notes that there's no archeologically-sensitive areas. Impact on noise, odor, and light. The project will not result in significant impacts to noise, odor, and light, except during construction. There would be an increase in noise related to the construction of the foundation system for the solar PV system. Typically, for a project this size, that is something that lasts somewhere between three and five weeks. And then, once the construction of the foundation system is over, the rest of the construction is relatively quiet. The outdoor lighting during the operation is limited to switch on lights at inverter boards which will face north. They're usually on the backside of the panels. The panels are pitched to the south, and those are relatively small service lights, and they're not typically, they're switched on during service periods, so they're not something that's typically on. In addition, inverters can make a low hum, but inverters are also typically noted as interior structures within the array, and that hum is attenuated over the distance to the property line from where they're typically located. Consistency with community character. We note that the project is consistent with the community character, with adjacent land uses representing a very wide range of uses, including the municipal water treatment facility, agriculture, recreation, open space, and single-family homes. We note that the town has a similar sort of complex land use scheme around the existing solar array. We note that the project site is located within the Agricultural Business District, and that a solar energy system of this size is permitted within that district.
Thank you very much, Brandy. That was a lot of words, and we appreciate you walking us through it so comprehensively. And again, we reference the referral forms and the returns that we did receive. So at this time, I think we're ready to entertain Resolution Number 120, which is adopting a determination of non-significance for the Cooking Ham West Solar Installation. And it details much of what you've heard, which is we are considering the installation of a 0.7491 megawatt, or said another way, 749.1 kilowatt, a community solar array, the project, on the portion of the 11.16-acre parcel. I believe the overall size of what we initially acquired is nearly 100 acres on the west side there, so a very small portion of that overall acquisition. The town has been notified that we are awarded by New York State Energy Research and Development Authority a grant in the amount of $175,000 to fund a portion of the construction of the project. And as you notes, as you, of course, no doubt know, we did receive earlier a $100,000 grant for the upgrades, the necessary upgrades to the line, the distribution there as well. We classified the proposed action on November 12th as unlisted under SEACER. We've considered the criteria in six NYCRR, 617-7, and thoroughly analyzed, all identified relevant areas of environmental concerns. We've reviewed this draft, neged deck, and setting forth the reasons supporting this determination. And I submit Resolution Number 120. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay. We now move on to...
I want all against.
Once to...
Isn't that part of the record?
Sorry, I think we have...
Isn't that part of the record to ask who's...
Five, zero. We're at five zero.
Why are you loading it only in those who are in favor?
The vote is five, zero, Barry.
We don't get a vote.
It's on the record.
Oh, I see. We didn't get that.
No, no, no.
What am I doing here? I don't understand. I'm not a member of the... You took away my vote.
Sorry, all right. Resolution 121. So now we're looking at the determination of the applicability to the town and village zoning laws as it relates to the community solar project. And again, we're considering the 749.1 kilowatt solar project. It once again reiterates the NISERDA grant. We've held a public hearing. We've done the SEACER review. We've adopted a neged deck just moments ago. The Town Board has undertaken a review of this project to determine applicability, and we've considered as the nine factors, Sabine Moss and County of Monroe versus City of Rochester, the nature and scope of the instrumentality, seeking immunity, the encouraging government's legislative grant of authority, the kind of function or land use involved. We've detailed all of that for you during the course of this discussion. The effect of land use... The effect of land use regulations would have upon the enterprise concern. Alternative locations for the facility in less restrictive zoning areas. And I will note that when it comes to locating at least somewhat significantly sized ground-mounted solar systems, that you can't just locate them anywhere. The grid infrastructure and the necessary upgrades also come into play. There is no alternative location available for the project with less restrictive zoning.
I think that will be a really important point as the public begins to see impacts on the site. You know, the obvious question is, oh, why didn't you put it somewhere else that's, you know, less in the public view? And this is the answer to that. I think we need to just make sure that we talk about that a lot.
Yeah.
We've studied and looked at lots of maps, and that the interconnection is significant there.
Yeah, and we have, in previous meetings, shown the map. There is a map that shows you the various distribution lines from either the Rhinebeck Substation or the Mylan Substation. And basically, Central Hudson as our utility details the capacity that is available on each one of these lines. And just the general rule is the further you are away from three-phase lines that have availability, and if you need to upgrade, you know, all the way down to Rhinebeck, for example, it can be quite costly. And once the interconnection costs, which I think we did speak about when we did the CSER study several months ago, if those interconnection costs are high, basically the project becomes no longer financially viable. So we have studied the entire town, to look at available spots, wanted to look at our zoning, and this is one of the few that came up, you know, as work at exploration. And the CSER study, in fact, proved that. It was a quite modest amount necessary to upgrade the line in order to accommodate this size system. So thank you, Julie, for getting me down to reiterate those important points. Okay, impact upon legitimate local interest. Of course, we have talked about our climate action goals and our adopted plans, and how it is a community effort to have homegrown clean energy here that we can offer to our residents at affordable rate. And we have talked about having, you know, perhaps ultimately, a handful of these systems within our municipality in order to have sufficient energy development, clean energy development. Alternative methods of providing the proposed improvement. We talk about the PSC order that established CDG, which is Community Distributed Generation. It's now nine years in the running. And we jumped right on it. Back in 2016, the order was given in 2015. And so it is important, by the way, it is important that we get this program established because it's quite possible that a lot of the incentives may be threatened, we will see under the new administration. And so we want to make sure that any benefits that will accrue to us through the IRA, you know, we take advantage of that should that program and funding become jeopardized. The extent of the public interest to be served by the improvements, and I think that we've talked about that, and I've referenced the plan and recommendations by our Energy Committee, CAC, Climate Action Plan. Make investments to fund, available to finance community-scale renewable energy installation. Facilitate the installation of at least two megawatts of onsite solar energy, and this will take us up to 2.7-ish in total. Climate smart community, of which we are, we're one of the first clean energy communities, municipalities in New York State, which is why we were awarded many years ago the first $100,000. Intergovernmental participation in the project development process and an opportunity to be heard. The project has been the subject of discussion at a number of Town Board meetings. We've talked about this project even before we acquired the property. And we have been talking about it for the better part of a year and change. And obviously, we've held a public hearing this evening on the matter. So based on the foregoing, the Town Board finds that the construction of the proposed solar project is immune from the application of the town zoning law and village zoning law, provided that the project shall be subject to, including a requirement for issuance of a building permit to ensure the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare.
And Robert, those senior texts are generally the safety provisions that must go into the installation rules for electrical connections.
Okay, right. So what Chris is saying is that the particular citations here are for the generally, the safety provisions that are included within the zoning. And as we've mentioned, I think, earlier tonight, as part of the electrical code, there must be a fence constructed around an array of this size. And of course, we would be doing that anyway. Okay, that's a lot of words, and it's Resolution Number 121. And I submit, who would like to second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. That was an almost bill, sorry. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
And William?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you very much. That's 121. Okay, and then the next thing is just a resolution on 122 to execute the contract with NISERDA, with the grant. And I just want to reiterate, you know, just for clarification, there's two ways to express the size. One is to do a fraction of a megawatt, or to do 749.1 kilowatt system. However you express it, it's the same size. So we'd like to put both 749.1 kilowatt system and amend Resolution 122. Put that in brackets, so that's clear. They're interchangeable. Whereas the town of Red Hook is notified of the award by NISERDA, an additional grant in the amount of $175,000 for the project. On November 12th, we classify the project as unlisted under SEACER, and we've held a public hearing tonight and declared a negative declaration under SEACER. Now therefore, we resolve the Town Board of the town of Red Hook authorizes the supervisor, or in his absence, the deputy supervisor, to execute and submit the grant with NISERDA as it relates to this project. And I am very happy to move 122.
Second.
She didn't want to raise her hand this time.
No, I knew she was going to...
I waited.
I didn't.
Gave you a second.
She was patient. All in favor? Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Resolution passes 122. Brandy? That's a lot of words. Okay, let's move through the documents. Next up, we're running quite late on some of these public hearings. Luckily, we can. So let's do... Let's quickly do the public hearing for 25, 26 fire service agreements. We're in right into Local Law G, amending zoning laws, and then we can ask Brandy to, you know, if there's anything you want to weigh in on. Okay, public hearing, fire service agreements. Deanna, please.
Notice the public hearing. Town of Red Hook, please take notice that concurrent public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the town of Red Hook on December 10th, 2024, at 7:50 p.m. local time at the Town Hall, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons regarding proposed fire protection district fire service agreement between the town of Red Hook and the Village of Tibbely for '25 and '26, and to hear all interested persons regarding a proposed fire protection district fire service agreement between the town of Red Hook and Village of Red Hook and the Red Hook Fire Company for '25 and '26. Both agree... Both agreements relate to the existing Red Hook Fire Protection District embracing the territory outside of the villages of Red Hook and Tivoli. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed agreement are available for review at the Town Hall in Red Hook, New York. By order of the town board of the town of Red Hook dated November 20th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. This time, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter? Going once, going twice. I would like to just make a quick note before we go ahead and close the public hearing. It must be said as part of the public hearing record that the town of Red Hook is immensely indebted to all the volunteers and both fire service companies. We are unusual in the fact that we have such dedicated individuals, and they save us not only in times of trouble, but they save us an enormous amount of money. And every two years and sometimes in between, if we have to modify, we have to pass these contracts, these agreements, service agreements with updated budget amounts, which are, at least in the 2025 case, we've already passed. But anytime we mention fire companies, we should take an opportunity to thank them. So I'd like to do that on the record. All right. Anything else? All right. This time, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, may we go right into public hearing, 8 o'clock, local law D, proposed of 2024, amending zoning laws.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Red Hook on December 10th, 2024, 8 o'clock PM local time at the Town Hall, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law number D, proposed of 2024, entitled Local Law Number D, Proposed of 2024. A local law updating and amending the town zoning law has been submitted to the town board of the town of Red Hook, the proposed local law. The town board has classified the action as a type 1 action and declared its intent to serve as lead agency for the matter. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard at said hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, Red Hook, New York. By order of the town board of the town of Red Hook dated November 20th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. And I'd like to note for the record, we did receive a couple of items of correspondence, one from the EDC and one from State Hines, Representative, what was it, State Hines?
Also a letter that we received from them last week. Do you recall?
Ah, yes, and a correspondence, yes. Also, I apologize, a third letter that we did receive. And for the record, it's our anticipation that we will continue this public hearing until a later date, that being December 30th at 7:30. And with some, potentially some modifications which we could discuss tonight. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a member of the public who would like to make some comments?
Sure.
You've been waiting patiently.
Mr. Shore, would you come up to the microphone, please, and state your name?
Sam Pealan, Chairperson of the Town of Red Hook Planning Board. Number one, I wanted to say that the planning board appreciates getting this material a couple of weeks ago. We had a chance to look at it before our meeting last Monday. There was a lot of interest in it, especially about the cannabis and all of the restrictions that were being placed on it in terms of where it was located and hours of operation, yada, yada, yada. We appreciate that the town board has subsequently made some modifications to that part of the zoning amendment. We will be, each of the planning board members took homework home and is going to be looking through the ordinance. And at our meeting next Monday, we will discuss proposed comments. They will then get summarized in a letter to be sent to you folks for your consideration at the next meeting. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shore. Very good. Any other public comments at the public hearing? So maybe, maybe take a look at at least a proposed D1, if you will, reflecting some of the comments we have received and heard at that initial planning board meeting, but also from others, we've got some input. So let's get to D1, shall we? He says, being the person who needs to get to D1. Okay, so one of the, here we go, legislative, I'll just scroll through, this is the black line, so if you can see, a couple of proposed changes. Down and on, here we go. Speaking of cannabis, so one of the recommendations is to remove the hours of operation from the zoning law so that it is reflected in proposed D1. And then, of course, that necessitates a little bit of reordering to perhaps reduce the distance requirements in such a way that to ensure that it doesn't eliminate many of the parcels throughout the, there were three proposed districts. And so there's a reduction so that it would be with the distance requirements only 200 feet instead of 500 from a residential use or zone, a reduction from 500, sorry, from 1,000 to 500 feet, and changing the terminology from the structure versus the lot line, which actually kind of does make a significant difference because you could end up with a church and the state maps out the church properties as well. But if you use the lot line, you know, if it's a church with a big, like we have here in the village, a big cemetery, you know, and you're going by lot line, then obviously that could have more of a distance impact. So here it's from the structure. I think the state uses the front door of the church as their measurement tool. So we've made both of those changes, both the number and also the definitional change. And also specifically referencing just the area used for the park or playground, playing field, again, to ensure that it doesn't capture lands that may belong to some of those uses that is not currently being used for those purposes. So that's pretty much in that area. I think it's reflective, you'll see, I'll have to jump around a little bit online, but you'll see that the two maps, or you have the two maps here, hard maps of when the changes were put in place, how many parcels would be eligible out of the, at least two districts, obviously, the third district, the office industrial, four to six acres, there's nothing near there that would serve as a distance requirement. And I would like to add also, I think the state had, I'm not sure if they're still using it, but they had a 2,000-foot distance from one dispensary to another. I'm not sure they're doing that anymore, but if they, if they are, that would basically take out, at this point with already an established cannabis here, much of the TND anywhere if that were to be, you know. I think that's pretty much the proposed changes for D1, and the table is there. And we could, you know, get, as Sam mentioned, and others, we could get some additional comments coming between now and December 30th. So it's pretty easy for me to juggle and to look at the maps on the screen. Let's get to go. Did I guess that? Well, yeah, I, you know, I'm starting to think that I hit the wrong option.
The bar is cool.
The bar, yeah, the bar is kind of. So let's, while that's loading, let's go identify a resolution to extend the public hearing, see if we can do any modifications with that. Continued public hearing. We'll leave these maps up to on the website, so folks can take a look at that as well.
Just for clarity, Robert, the hours of operation are removed from the zoning law but will be included in local law E1.
In local law E, and that's, we'll get to that when we do the public hearing. And one of the feedbacks that we did get was to allow the establishments to stay open later, and so it's proposed. It was some thinking about, can you, can you sort of try to mirror what's happening with the liquor stores and I think as our planner, so happily pointed out, liquor stores are only allowed in those two districts. We're actually adding a third district where cannabis dispensaries are allowed in local law E, as we're waiting here for this to upload. 7 PM is the closing hour, that's proposed now versus 6 PM. I will note that our liquor stores in our municipalities do close at 7 PM. And so that would at least mirror what, what is currently happening now with liquor stores. Okay, don't tell me, do not tell me that we waited all, all up for that download and it's not in a form that I can click and pull off. Well, suffice it to say, we have, and I apologize for the folks at home, maybe you can zoom in. This is the B2 district, for those of you who are familiar, where it is here, essentially it's south of Firehouse Lane. All of the parcels would be eligible that are in the B2 district. Here's the HB district, the historic business district, and these parcels would enact because of the church and the distance requirements with the church mostly, and the two over here with the residential, those would not be allowed, but something like half or more of that half would be permitted currently. And don't forget, you know, as we've seen, Tivoli being a good example, we have three churches there that are no longer in operation. So all of this could change conceivably. That's not the case. Okay, well, I apologize, I can't, I can't pull it up because of the way it's, the format that it's in. And the worst part is I'm going to need to go back again. We have, are we comfortable with D1 as it stands as modified? We can put that up for a continued. We have a PAF Part 1 that's going to establish. Shall we do that? I know we're jumping around a little bit. Brandy, did you want to just maybe talk before we go ahead and do the continued? Do you want to just quickly touch upon the wetlands, essentially what we're trying to accomplish as we promised the, the folks? We would do our best to have the moratorium expire at the end of the year. So we're putting in just some simple language that applications will be subject to the new regulations.
Right, that's correct. The state is still not released final wetland regulation. So the new language builds in a little bit of flexibility, understanding that, you know, the size and type of wetlands that will be regulated by the state, are unknown to us at this point in time, but in the interest of moving forward, we would have this local law instead. The other thing that has been added is some text to add a 25-foot buffer to federally regulated wetlands. And again, I think with the administration change, that definition may change also, but right now that's the national wetland inventory map wetlands that are used as reference.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have resolution, I think it's 123, 123, yeah? Establishing a date for a continued public hearing regarding the adoption of local law now D1, proposed of 2024, a local law updating and amending the town zoning code pursuant to section 239m of the GML. We held a public hearing based upon information presented after hearing, or rather, in this case, mostly prior to the hearing, as a memo that we received. We are now proposing a modified D1, and the town board would like to hold a continued public hearing on this on December 30th so that you could, folks, certainly ample opportunity to weigh in. And again, we encourage people to submit written comments if you feel like you have extensive comments on the proposed legislation. December 30th, 7:35, shall we? The official newspaper of the town on or before, that would be December 20th, right? I assume, is there a second? Thank you, boy. All in favor?
Aye.
Local law E, do we need Brandy for local law E?
Do we do the resolutions for the fire permits?
Not yet.
Not yet, we'll get to it.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, no, not to worry. You're not going crazy, I'm just trying to get Brandy out of here so she isn't.
Don't worry about it.
I'm just wondering if we need you for local law E, smoking and vaping? Well, let's, let's talk about that a little bit, right? I feel like you're sort of a subject matter expert on some of these things. Deanna, could we do the public hearing?
Notice of public hearing, please take notice, a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Red Hook on December 10th at 8:20 PM local time at the Town Hall, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law number E, proposed of 2024, entitled Local Law Number E, Proposed of 2024. A local law amending the town code, chapter 53, entitled Cannabis, adding a new article 2, entitled Regulation of Retail Dispensaries, and adding a new article 3, entitled Regulation of Smoking and Vaping, has been submitted to the town board of the town of Red Hook, the proposed local law. All interested persons will be given opportunity to be heard at said hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, Red Hook, New York. By order of the town board of the town of Red Hook dated November 20th, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Okay, this time I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. I think it was Julie, I think Julie does this time. All in favor? Aye, thank you very much. We'd like to speak on this topic. Okay, very good. So local law E is also going to be amended to reflect the changes in the hours. Since we have no. Since we have no, uh, comments as it relates to local law E. E1 again, uh, reflects the changes includes the hours. And for folks, uh, what we are seeking to do is to clarify and to include, uh, new activities, if you want to call that vaping and, um, cannabis, um, on, uh, lands that the public is utilizing, and so that is the purpose of local law E. Now, E1 to include hours of cannabis dispensaries. This time I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I just have a question.
Oh, yeah, why? What did I forget?
Are you going to continue the hearing and the doctor is...
Oh, yeah, sorry, continue, thank you. We have 124, I think, for continuing, right?
Yes.
Thank you. 7:45, folks, on the 30th?
7:40 or 7?
7:45.
Okay, moved?
Yeah, I'm just going to go through it, unfortunately. So I have E and E1, I just want to make sure that I have it back. Uh, yes, I did so move, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Krista. Christine always... All in favor? Aye, 7:45, December 30th. Should we query you on what, what, what you all have there in Great Barrington or not?
I'm happy to answer questions in my personal capacity as the president of that town.
Are you okay with, with me putting you on the spot to do so?
Sure, yeah, that's fine. Just as long as it's my, this is my personal capacity.
Yes, and I really appreciate you because you have so much experience being in Great Barrington. Any, anything that you, did you get a chance to look at our proposed, uh, E1?
I will admit, I have not had a chance to look at the proposed E1. I was present for the planning board discussion about, um, provisions related to, um, operational conditions associated with cannabis facilities. Um, so just for those of you who don't know, in my personal capacity, I'm the planning board chair in Great Barrington, and, um, we are obviously under Massachusetts regulations. Massachusetts regulations for cannabis facilities, um, are very prescriptive in terms of even things down to how they can advertise and hours of operation and things like that. That all comes with your state license, and so localities have very limited ability to restrict, it's considered a retail use. Um, and so, um, given, you know, in New York's regulation being a little bit different, there's more flexibility for municipality to put in place a local law, you've got stronger home rule, um, and so, you know, to have a provision in your town code that provides the planning board some guidance, uh, you know, personally as an individual and as a planning board chair in another community, I think that's helpful, um, so that the, um, planning board doesn't have to be arbitrary at all, they can point to the local law and say, these are, um, these are our guidelines for, um, operation. It also establishes, um, some, um, parameters that if a, uh, business is coming into the community, they can see what the expectations are, removes any inconsistencies that, you know, may be associated with one operator or another operator, keeps a level playing field for all businesses.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, when it was legalized in Massachusetts, was it theory wellness or wellness theory? Was the first dispensary in Great Barrington?
Correct.
I understand at the time when it was by itself in the very beginning, there were some traffic issues. Were those issues, um, in terms of like having extra police, you know, was that something that the planning board of Great Barrington dictated, or is that something that the town board of, of Great Barrington dictated in terms of reimbursement of overtime for police officers to direct traffic, uh, things of that nature?
So, in the Massachusetts statute, there's a, um, a provision that allows, uh, the town board to enter into what's called a host community agreement, similar to a developer's agreement, where there's a set of standards and conditions that are particular to a, a location. The way Great Barrington handled it was that the town board referred all the site plan related things to the planning board, asked for inputs. We sent, the planning board sent input back to the town board, they formulated into a host community agreement, but it did include things like provisions for reimbursement of additional, um, police services.
Thank you. I was sort of struck by, when I was such a, a planning board member, I was struck by the fact that you, you shared that there were seven dispensaries in Great Barrington, and, uh, I don't know, that was something, because we, we did get feedback, and obviously this, like many issues, we hear from people, folks who don't want to have any, folks who want to let it happen wherever it happens, as many, the, the more the merrier, and of course, there are many people somewhere in between us, because it's often the case on issues. But I was struck by the fact that there were seven that were, uh, and I, I would be surprised if the majority of our residents would, would want to see seven of anything, frankly, except for perhaps something like restaurants, but, um, also, um, you know, our, our, our proposed code allows for additional ones. It, it appears we already have one in the town and one coming perhaps in the village, so that's two already, it's a good way to start, and obviously if there are more proposed, um, within the districts, that would, that would be something. I did hear that we can limit, uh, it's my understanding, we can limit the number of the, in the community if we were to want to do that. What, what troubles me is the fact, it reminds me of years ago, there was grocery stores before many of them were done, there were a couple of grocery stores, Super Stop and Shop, the Hyde Park had, um, the, the town's grocery store, and then decided to want a bigger and better one, built a new one across from Route 9. They, my understanding is they held on to the lease and kept, kept a vacant store because it was, from a competitive standpoint, that was the move to make. And what troubles me is that these licenses are tied to, um, addresses and specific locations, so if we were to have both sort of a boom bust, which I think Colorado, for example, had, um, I would be concerned if we had shuttered places, but those places were not being utilized for something else because the licenses were tied there, and people didn't want to give up that ability to have a license until they saw how the industry tricked out. Ultimately, I think there were some provisions in the code, Super Stop and Shop years ago, years later, rather, actually went back to the other side of the road in Hyde Park. So that's just something that you jabbed at me in the planning board meeting, was, was the implications of having many of them and anyone included, and I'm not, I'm not so sure how our residents would feel about seeing both all of them open and maybe some of them shuttered for years because people didn't want to give up those licenses. In terms of actually out in the public spheres, have you all addressed that on your public lands, were you...
So, again, somewhat differently than New York, um, our town has for many, many years, maybe two decades, had a ban on public smoking of any kind.
Okay.
Um, so that has curtailed any, um, you know, use of, of cannabis products that produce a smoke, um, in public spaces.
So, public space is being defined as?
As town sidewalks, public buildings, school facilities, um, playgrounds, parks.
Okay.
Yeah, municipal facilities and, and public ways.
Public ways, okay.
Now, if you go to Tanglewood for a James Taylor concert, you know, it's a different story, so...
Don't, don't play that on James Taylor. Okay. Well, thank you, that's very helpful, Brandy, I appreciate it. Appreciate the input, and I appreciate you taking a few extra minutes of your time, because once again, you've got expertise that we can tap into, um, on issues. All right, that being said, oh, and we have to do St. Margaret's Park, and that's why you're not going anywhere. Good lord, well, we're being efficient, we're having you here on many things.
Wonderful.
I'll, I'll roll out the cop. What do we have to do with E1? We were entertaining a...
To extend the...
7:45, December 30th. I, I thought I moved and there was a second, did we move on it? I don't think it did. Deanna?
No, um, I think Christine moved.
All in favor?
And who seconded?
There we go.
Oh, I think I, what?
Christine moved.
Oh, she moved, I'll second. All in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Okay, 7:45, that's on E1, thank you very much. Um, okay, St. Margaret's Parking, so this is what I'm supposed to be doing.
We're deploying new technology, so there's a thumb drive there that has a concept plan for St. Margaret's Parking. So just while the supervisor pulls up the plan, um...
She says mobile fully.
Just real quickly, by way of summary of where we are with St. Margaret's right now, um, this board, um, may recall back at the end of summer, we were putting together, um, a package of materials to bid a handicap accessible ramp and, and handicap accessible parking for St. Margaret's. Um, we, those plans had been in the works for some time, as some of the building renovations have been ongoing. So, can I just say, a little screen should have popped up when you plugged it in?
It didn't, I clicked on that.
And then there should be a little window that gives you an option for two files to open?
Would this be this little guy down here? No, I don't think so.
Let's pull it out, I'm ready to add you.
Okay.
You must have moved that box, that black box, the zoom box.
What about?
Are you doing a screen share right now?
Can you not see it because of the screen share?
I don't, I don't know if that's, maybe not.
Just drag one of them out, explore it.
That's not, I can't find them, let's... Try just, can you type it in?
Hit the search bar.
Just stop sharing and go look for it and then start sharing again, that's the problem.
Try and look in.
Well, maybe we'll use our imagination and then we'll talk about St. Margaret's.
What, are you looking for the maps? Or is that the...
What's that?
Ticket for the drive.
Yeah, just do a... I don't think that's in the packet, is it in the packet?
Uh, well, they were in the...
There were.
They were seven, so we got...
Right here, should bring up there.
Okay.
Then that little arrow should bring up where?
This one?
Yeah. That should...
There were, for like two maps?
Yeah.
I think they're in the packet.
To the...
Oh, to the...
Yeah, that thing, yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Open devices? Uh, shoot, can you add devices? I don't think you want to add.
Um, if you click on...
You must, you must be down at the bottom.
There you go.
Done?
Guess so.
I, I don't feel confident.
I don't really see the...
You just click on system and bring down, um, you know, all the drives, it'll be down from the other drive.
It's funny, God, it's not...
You can't figure it out.
I don't need to go for, um, no...
Jacob, are you helping?
No, I'm right.
I have this computer, this new thing, and I don't quite understand, but... Oh, what? And then you have to find the, you know, all the...
I would type file explorer in the search bar.
Oh, there you go. Right there, find, find a setting, right?
I, I think...
Down in lower search bar, the bottom. Lower search bar.
Oh, yes, down here, where the little square is a four blue, the blue square, down, way down at the bottom of the screen.
This is like a front page.
Yeah.
Why don't I just hand this to somebody who knows how to use it now?
Operating...
Okay, what am I, what am I searching for? What's the search here?
File.
File.
There you go.
Why is that so hard to find?
It's, it's Brant, this is new and I...
So it's...
They make it so difficult.
It should be a little bit...
Definitely not intuitive.
It's not at all.
That's why I use that one.
On the left-hand side, you want the USB journal.
Yes, exactly, thank you, true.
What's that?
Go farther to the left hand, yeah, keep going, USB journal.
There you go.
Yeah.
Is that, oh, no, spend it first.
You want to do the parking one first, and then if we want to go to the other one, we can go to the...
Wow. Ta-da!
Piece of cake.
Well done, well, for second method.
Meeting adjourned, okay.
Um, so what's being shown on the screen, uh, is sort of a top, uh, split screen, so the top part of the screen is, um, what is out at St. Margaret's currently, and there is a polygon, I missed a 41st second, I'll show you, there's a polygon here that is roughly the area of the ADA project that bid documents have been prepared for. So, just in terms of that project, um, we have bid documents prepared. What we were waiting for was, um, the, the county gave this, uh, gave the town of Red Hook, uh, oh, boy, is it a CDBG? It's a CDBG grant, they gave them a, gave you guys a CDBG grant to improve accessibility at St. Margaret's. Um, the initial plan for those grant funds was to use it for interior improvements. Um, however, part of the interior improvements involved a vertical lift, and we've just been struggling architecturally to make that lift fit into the building. Um, and because we don't have exterior ADA access, we asked the county if the scope of the improvements could be moved from ADA improvements interior to ADA improvements exterior. They said yes, so to allow grant funds to cover the cost of that. However, uh, because of the change in scope, they needed to go back through their process and do a federal environmental review for the change in scope before they could authorize us to proceed. That has taken the better part of two months to get through that process, and just last week, we received, uh, notice from them that we can now proceed with the ADA, uh, ramp and accessible parking for St. Margaret's. Um, in the intervening time period, um, talking with the committee that is working out there, um, and if you haven't been up there to see the work that's been done already, it's really impressive, but we realized people are coming up there, workers are coming up there, everybody's parking kind of helterskelter all over the place. Um, and so, when we think about putting out a bid package for one accessible parking space and ADA ramp, the natural conversation went to, should we also have that same contractor making a small improved parking area, um, on the south side of the property? So, we had one of our landscape architects, um, take a look at that, um, and come up with a concept which is what's shown in the bottom of the screen, which would basically take the existing access and driveway, um, which is currently providing access to St. Margaret's, and in, instead of limiting the scope of the project to just the single accessible space, actually formalize with a little gravel parking area approximately 15 spaces, so that once we can get the public into that building, you actually have a place to park the public, because there's really no place that's designated up there to park. Um, and, you know, you may be able to work out some sort of shared parking with some of the businesses in the area, but under any circumstances, it's somewhat of a long walk. So, um, the concept here in the hatching is the proposed, uh, gravel parking area. Um, about in the center of the parking area, it's a little bit hard to see, but it says existing garage, so there's a little... So there's a little modular style garage, that's actually St. Margaret's. That's the existing garage, yes, exactly. That would remain. Just in talking with the rec department, they are storing a mower there and some yard equipment and some maintenance tools, so they would like to keep that. There's sufficient space between a really nice big oak tree that we want to preserve and the garage to actually get a gravel driveway through there. And so, before we go to put the ADA improvements out to bid, we wanted to come and speak with you about whether or not it makes sense at this same time to expand the scope of the project. That would be obviously something that would need to be paid out of town funds, but we can very easily segregate the bid form to have the ADA improvements as one bid item and the gravel parking area improvements as a separate bid item. So that the accounting and the reimbursement processes is not diminished. It also gives you a little bit of economy of scale to have a slightly larger project and bid it at one time rather than going out for bid for parking area at some point in the future.
And the proposal has approximately how many spaces?
Fifteen.
Just as a little question, did you consult with the rec department about plowing and maintaining the gravel driveway?
Yes, we did. And they are, they seem supportive of, you know, having a gravel parking area.
You met with them at the site?
I met, yeah, we met, and we looked at it. And basically, what they'd like to do is, within the existing lawn spaces available, convert some of that area into the parking area rather than... There's one single big white pine tree that's got a lot of insect damage. They've already had Dave Street look at it, and he's recommended it come down. But there are a number of deciduous trees, kind of in the perimeter of the proposed parking space that could be, that would remain, and that would provide a nice screening for the parking area. Also, the land there, if you are down by the Stewart's, for instance, or Savona's, and you're looking up, the land actually pitches back towards the Hanaford, and so that's kind of nice, too. It provides even some natural screening when you're on the highway, so you don't see that portion of the lawn. So, it's already open space, seemed like a good opportunity to create some parking that's close to the property. We're not proposing asphalt, we think it would want to be a little bit rustic, which means we probably need some sort of like timber wheel stops or something. But the intent would be kind of like a low-impact parking area rather than something really formalized.
Does gravel meet ADA?
So the ADA space is already provided and that will be paved?
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Yeah, absolutely. And the ADA design, we've worked with the county, and they've reviewed our design. We had one of our landscape architects put it together, but it's a, there is a continuous travel route from the parking area to the door. Separately, the crew at St. Margaret's has been working on door restoration, but the scope of the improvements project will also include push-button access on these historic restored doors, and again, if you haven't seen them, they look incredible.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a modern, modern day miracle.
So, well, you know, the problem with gravel is when you're plowing, it gets pushed off. So, is there a plan for something to contain the gravel so that then we don't end up, the rec people don't have to try to rake it every year, or then they're mowing and the stones are going all over?
It's a really good question. There isn't a plan necessarily, other than, you know, to create a grassy buffer at the end of, probably at the south end, where they just have to probably pull some of that gravel back.
That's what keeps the York Brakes in business, right? It's getting that gravel back.
Yeah, I mean, gravel, you know, to Christine's point, is it requires more maintenance. But it does give...
I mean, I get the rustic look, but it creates a whole new raft of issues for maintenance.
Right.
You know, we've already had an incident where mowing, and it wasn't a rock, you know, got thrown out into Route 9 and hit a window on a car that was going by. So, I understand and I appreciate the thought for the rusticness. And, you know, I'm sure there's a significant difference in cost. But I wonder if we might, well, either I just think we perhaps need to investigate some other approaches, or we need to think, really think through how we're going to keep the gravel where we want it to be and not migrating out into the grass or, and, you know, getting thrown up by a mower, et cetera.
Okay.
This is...
Also, oh, I just want to think before I forget, I just wanted to ask, when we've had some discussions on our wish list for getting a sidewalk continued up the hill to Hanaford on the south side of the St. Margaret's, so is that, where does that fall in comparison to this, the southern end of this parking lot?
Like, geographically, where is it located?
Is it quite up against, how far apart is it?
Yeah, so, the square in the center, closer where the cursor is now, is the St. Margaret's. North is to the right, south is to the left. So the parking area is proposed south. The footpath that sort of has developed over time from Hanaford Lane down to the sidewalk near Holy Cow is a couple hundred feet, or maybe 250 feet north. We did look at a conceptual master, conceptual overall plan for the St. Margaret's campus, and it would make tremendous sense at some point to have a sidewalk linkage that comes further south on Route 9 to St. Margaret's, so that if people wanted to just walk from other areas in town to St. Margaret's, that they would have that access. Right now, we don't have that, but I think that should be planned for in the future.
I think as soon as we get this project done, we should be back in applying to the county for some more CDBG, right? I think that's the stance that I get.
Right.
As soon as we can get this done.
The plan envisioned that because of the garage, the southern area has less flexible use for the public, and maybe lends itself more to parking, it's closer to the supermarket, so kind of less aesthetically valuable. There's a, what could be a great lawn space to the north of St. Margaret's that could be available for public space or putting tents on or having recreational use there.
And so, the, so the parking space that's identified as number one will be the handicap?
Yes.
Space. And is that going to meet the requirements for a van sizing?
Yes, in New York, they're universal spaces, so, yeah. Yeah, so there's an accessible aisle and an accessible space as part of the improvement for the ADA. And then there's some additional asphalt material that would go to a short section of sidewalk and then to the ramp up to the building.
Is that this square here?
That whole square is where the asphalt is proposed to be, yes.
Thank you, that was going to be my next question. And so recognizing that this has not gone out to bid yet?
Yes.
The additional portion, not the part that's covered by the grant for the ADA improvements, order and magnitude, tell me how much we're talking about?
It's probably somewhere between $75,000 and $100,000 for the earthwork. That area is a little bit undulating. I know the town does have a source of borrow material, so potentially, you know, we could work something out to have that material moved there, but it's probably around $100,000 to do that additional work, yeah.
Well, we're so close to opening up the place, you know, once, once this initial ADA, you know, exterior stuff. But I, I'm nervous about not having any parking to do that, and I think that we're gonna... We're gonna need it. I mean, it's just the simple reality, we're gonna need some parking there, and we've been sort of, the good graces of others, you know, on the rare occasion, we've had the library doing programs on the porch, kind of a thing.
Yeah, I did want to, helter-skelter was the right word. I tried to park up at the top, and there was just cars in there.
Right, it's not organized. I think if it remains grass, it probably makes sense to have someone direct parking if you're going to have an event there, and identify, you know, where on the grass. What we find with grass parking areas is they're really dependent on the weather. And although the flat area probably could be parked on very intermittently, you wouldn't want to do something where you're parking people there on a daily basis, because it would just potentially turn into a mud pit, and then it just becomes a real, a real maintenance mess for everyone.
So, for the grant money piece of it, does any of that have to cover the, you know, I mean, there's the asphalt place where you park, right? But you have to get to that. So does any of that have to go for the entrance, you know, section of the driveway, or whatever you want to call it, the entrance road, so that that would have to be paved?
No, no. Yeah, the grant is strictly covering the accessible parking improvements, so, you know, the full depth of accessible parking improvements from the earthwork we need to do to sort of dig out a sub base and put in stone and then the asphalt on top of it, and then everything related to the ramp. And the ramp is a fairly robust construction. But right now, what you have is essentially like a residential driveway entrance, and that's not included in the ADA improvement.
Sorry to know some of that was required. So basically, it's going to cover all that substrate work and the paving for the parking space number one?
Yeah.
And then that's sort of white square?
And the, yeah, the accessible aisle around it, yes, that's correct.
What's the price differential between gravel and permeable surface that could be plowed?
I could get that to you, we actually just did that for another community, and honestly, we were surprised at the paper cost. Pavers are sort of the more common permeable surface that's used, and they are relatively expensive. There's a lot of labor to install them.
I was thinking in terms of plowing.
Oh, in terms of plowing?
Well, just in terms of not dealing with the gravel issue, I have to use stone.
I haven't priced it recently, but we could look at it. There is a system that we've used a number of times, it's called a grass pave system, and it's essentially a plastic thick mesh that you put on a stone base like you would for a gravel parking area, but then you fill that mesh with topsoil and plant grass on it.
So it's firm?
So it's very firm and stable, but it looks more like a grassy parking area. Typically, we would only do that for the parking stalls. We would still recommend that the aisle be gravel, because wheel turning can chew it up a little bit.
Can I imagine plowing could chew it up, too?
Well, and that's another reason you really need defined edges, because mowing can get, that stuff can get wrapped. If you go a little too close with the mower, sometimes, too.
Well, your timber wheels, I mean, couldn't we utilize that?
If we did timber wheel stops?
Yeah, to sort of maybe...
We could do a timber border.
Yeah, like a timber border or something, so that the gravel can...
You could, yeah.
Did, what did, what did John say? Was he worried about the gravel or not?
He wasn't, but the mowing point that you're raising is actually a good one, and I should just, because they do, there's tremendous amount of mowing there, and they mow very regularly to keep it really park-like.
But if it were, if you were to have a timber border or something, then I think that would, you'd have some weight blocking, maybe, but I think it would sort of eliminate a lot of that.
The other thing we could do is we could create, we're showing like where the aisle is, like a little bump out, and usually for gravel parking area, that's where a car would back into. But if we made that more rectangular and we didn't permit parking there, what it becomes is a snow storage area, so that that plowing terminates within your parking space, and then any gravel that's bound up in the snow, you know, when the snow melts, it falls out. You end up with a little uneven surface that still needs some raking, but it's not in your lawn space. So that's potentially a strategy that could be deployed from a design standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the maintenance issue is certainly absolutely valid. On the other hand, it is to have all that fossil fuel, oil, vapor, black tar.
I will just give my consistent message of, all these parts require more maintenance.
Yeah.
We have to make sure that we...
Yeah.
We got an email today about the status of equipment that has been extended beyond its useful life.
And we're getting on a new...
And, you know, and we have, we depend upon seasonal folks who may not be as familiar with like, if we used the webbing, how that works, and, you know, it takes one person who didn't get the memo, and then we've got a lot of problems. So, I just wanted us to make sure that we are taking the time to think it through, so we are keeping the maintenance as efficient and easy to do as possible.
Yeah.
And then, because this is, you know, adjacent to a very highly traveled road, and we've unfortunately already had an incident, so I'm really concerned
Right.
about gravel flying around, because it got pushed out into the grass, you know.
So is that something we could look at, a border there to contain it?
Yeah, would it be helpful if we came back with a couple of options and like costs, and then you would have a little bit more of a complete picture to look at?
Yeah, I think... But I do think we need to, we need to keep moving with this, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And otherwise, we're going to miss another grant cycle for, for example, that sidewalk we're talking about.
Right.
Right.
They want to see us finish this first, so...
Right, and this would be a spring construction, our goal would be to put the ADA work out for bid in January, get bits back in February, so that the contractors are ready to go as soon as the conditions allow.
And then you have the permeable and permeable, and then it, you know, does it raise the level of...
In any case, this is well under the one acre threshold. So, you know, there are no circumstances where we're triggering the need for construction general permit. You just simply can't accommodate that much parking. This is what we think is reasonable to provide on this space while respecting your frontage buffer and leaving that kind of a lawn landscape space.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, thank you very much.
Okay, sure. Yeah, we'll do that.
Those options we can take, but maybe just rough estimates of, because you don't have...
Give you some sort of immediate feedback, and then you can maybe come back at the meeting with more detailed work on the ones that we sort of coalesce around.
Did you say dirtball? What was the term?
Ballpark.
Ballpark.
What sports did you play?
I only played baseball, really.
Oh, then you should have got ballpark.
No, I played a few sports, but that was the only one that would put me on a team. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so... Where are we? Let's see where we have the...
I don't have to do anything, I'm on the WBE right now.
We need to go back to three, resolution to adopt in 25 and 26.
Good night, everyone.
We have a, as Mark Crosby used to say, a restitution. I think that, resolution. Number 124 dated December 24th, approving the Town of Red Hook Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook and the Red Hook Fire Company for 2025 and 2026. And I shall note that the village approved it last night as well. Won't read the wherethes, it's all available there on the website. To note, we have these two-year agreements with various fire companies. And I would love to vote 124 with gratitude. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, 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 I could see, I could see you. Everybody wants to thank the fire companies and law relationship. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0. We had our discussion on parking. We now have a resolution authorizing the execution of an extension of an municipal agreement with Betches County regarding assistance with central purchasing services, which basically means we work with the county when it is advantageous to us on some charity procurement stuff. And we have been doing this at least most of my time.
Where is this, the range should be 125.
Oh, it should be 125? Okay. Thank you. Let the record show, we approved the fire service agreements, but there's a technical change, the number is 1.5. Okay. Okay. Where are we?
Sorry.
We're now at 126. Authorizing, which is essentially an extension of the IMA with Dutchess County for shared services purchasing. There's the agreement. It's effective, actually it's effective. It's effective through, they have a different year, October 31st, 2025. We would like to move this scope of services. They assist in development of bid specifications, opinion and research. Some point of contact for related questions for our bids. Also, there's an upstart state purchasing group. The list is rather extensive. We have used them on a couple occasions.
Can we use a, a date from the past to start?
It's an extension of an existing...
An existing one, so.
So it's, I think it's okay. But to, to note that it will only last until work finishes and we'll be back here once again. Who would like to move 126, Julie Solomon? Do you know anybody who'd like to think about it? Second? Somebody? Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, William.
Aye.
Jacob.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we mentioned earlier, we have a resolution now 127 dated December 10th, 2024, approving amendment to inter municipal agreement with the Village of Red Hook regarding the sewer district number one project. Cool. Do we have our, do we have our number, then? Chris, do we have our ARCA number? We want to fill in for our blank, don't we?
The number is on the exhibit A, 554,206,23.
Yeah. There it is. Okay. So let's put that in the restitution. As Norman Crosby would say, 554, 206,22. And for the folks at home, one of the eligible uses of ARCA is water and sewer infrastructure. And this part of our efforts to ensure that proper growth inducing and environmental protection aspects, having central sewer go up and down the TND, traditional neighborhood district where there will be, where it is, and existing commercial uses and will be additional commercial uses and residential misuse. The town board feels that it is such an important initiative that we should dedicate what is essentially the remaining ARCA funds towards this effort.
Robert, if I could?
Yeah.
Just confirm that number. This was a prior pack and I'm not sure which pack you're looking at.
Yeah, I think... Yeah, two, I have 206,22. Remember, there was a penny and a dollar there. I think we're...
I thought there was two exactly.
Just want to make sure we're looking at it right.
Oh, yeah, there's one revised today. It's after that. Yeah, 554, 205, 23.
Yeah, I believe one revised today.
Yeah.
Like yesterday. And I think that was the one with... 554, 205, so...
205, all right.
Yeah, I think so.
205, 20, 22?
205, 23.
206.
It's like a 99 cent difference.
So the correct one is 205, 23. Actually, one is double digits.
23, you're saying?
Yeah.
99 cents off. Okay, so 127 is amended, 554, 205, 23, ARCA funds. We adopted an egg deck for the project back in June. Okay, who wants to move water and sewer? I wonder who wants to move 127.
So moved.
Second.
Somebody's getting excited over there. Okay, any further discussion, folks? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
50. Okay, speaking of water and sewer, we got a letter from EFC asking us if we would like to participate in financing. Obviously, we, that was a part of our application. And so, yes, we do want to pursue financing through the theme Water State Revolving Fund. And so we would indicate to them their... Their fiscal year is, ends in June, so I think we'd want to say yes. What date do you anticipate financing? I think we want to put March of 2025. So don't forget, you want to, you know, perhaps entertain some financing for pre-construction activities, design and so on and so forth. And you want to be in this year's cycle.
And if we move forward and authorize a particular amount that we would like to finance, that does not preclude seeking additional grant funding, right? We could always...
It does not. They're always adjusting, yeah. Okay, so March of 2025. Folks, and all respond accordingly. They want an answer by the end of the week, something like, I mean, four days' notice. And correspondence. Correspondence?
Because there's never enough money go around, so they, who can ask the fastest?
Is that right? Exactly. Well, I'll get that in first thing in the morning. And last, but not least, just a little bit of correspondence. We have a letter of interest from Stephen Roberts. I think previously had bounced around the idea of perhaps being interested in the planning board. Now has, and I saw him last week. We were getting our hair cut at the same time. He details it in the background and is interested in a couple of different boards and committees. And so as we look to, in January, we populate and to take a fresh look at some of the committees and whether or not we should have some joint village town committees as well. You know, let's add Steve's name. Really pleased that he's thrown in a couple of different options there. We'll put him in touch with the chairs of those respective boards. And there are particular requirements on the ethics boards. We'll have to take a look at that and see whether Stefan would be able to fulfill those requirements. That's all I have, folks. Before we entertain a motion to close the meeting, I would like to extend best holiday wishes to everyone this season. I know that the holiday schedule is rather unusual this year. I note that for the first time, I think, in my lifetime, Hanukkah starts on Christmas, right, or after Christmas?
That day after Christmas.
So between...
Wow, this is unusual.
For some, I look at it, we ended in the next calendar year.
Wow. Well, I'll have to, yeah, I'll have to study like how all happens because I have to completely ignore it somehow.
When you figure it out, let me know.
Oh, well, is it that complicated? Okay, I might pass on that one. But we will wish you health and happiness during the winter season. Obviously, take it easy out there on the roads and stay safe, stay healthy. And we'll see you again back in, on December 30th. Shall we do just a very brief motion to go into attorney-client? I know it's late, but we'll just get an update from, from our attorney. Okay.
Are you giving the motion?
Apparently I am. Uh, thank you, Jacob. All in favor? Good night, folks. Thank you very much.